Okay, I'll ask for the pleasure of the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, not seen any special reports this evening, so we've been approving the meetings from the last council meeting. So moved. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries seven nothing. Audience comments, this is an opportunity for member of the audience to address council, we're up to five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name's Chris Todd, 801 Ashwood Drive. I was wondering if council had yet received any feedback from law enforcement or any commentary on what happened with the flyers that were distributed on some of the driveways down in Venetia last week, is there, is there any follow-up, is there any?
It's my understanding that they were able to fix something up on a, one of the traffic cams.
Yeah, our understanding is that this was a group associated with a larger distribution of this type of materials around the area. I believe, don't quote me on this, but they were turning over the investigation, I believe to the city of Pittsburgh, to be able to go after.
Because the squirrel hill was tied to it and...
Correct.
I'm not sure any laws were necessarily broken, other than the horrific nature of the messaging, but it's just, I was just curious if there was any feedback that had been...
There's some law that was broken.
I think it was an out-of-state license as well, they got off the truck.
I heard Ohio, okay, I was just wondering if you'd heard anything about it. The other question I had at the last meeting, there wasn't any discussion behind it, but of the four modifications that were made to the police policy manual, one of them had to do with, I guess, removing the right-to-know associated with the police body cam images, I was just wondering what the nature of that was, because there wasn't, I'm sure you all had discussions about it, but there wasn't discussion in here, I was just kind of wondering what the, what the impetus was for that, or what the thought process is.
I'll be honest, I don't have the, the answer for that question. I know the chief is diligent in making sure that they're following larger state procedures as well, and there are times when we need to make updates to our policies to mirror those of larger agencies. I'm not sure if that was the case in this scenario, but we can certainly find out for you.
That was my understanding as well, that he was echoing a, a larger statewide.
Well, you normally, you normally wouldn't be able to use the Right-to-Know Act to get that type of investigative...
So it's just putting it into writing, that it all falls?
Right, I mean, I think if you're, I know from being, doing criminal work, that you can't get it, once the case is filed, the defense attorney can get it, but you could subpoena it, so.
Okay, so it's not, it's not that it disappears into emptiness, it's that it's...
No, no, no. And there's some policy where they, they have to hold it for so long, and then I guess, I guess they re-tape over, I don't know how that works.
I, I was just curious.
That's what I'm assuming, that it ends.
Yeah, one of the exceptions is ongoing investigation, typically that's where that falls, that body cam, and Mr. Akery's right, usually the defense attorney will work his way to get it out, either by the DA providing it, or them subpoenaing the police department.
And right-to-know is, is like a state or local?
It's a state, it's a state law.
As opposed to FOIA, national?
Yeah, that's like federal, right, yeah.
Okay.
And it's basically, pretty much the same, as far as scope of what you can get.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you.
Anybody else?
My comment's basically on the same thing, and that section that he's basically concerned about, and I was concerned about it too, was General Order 1503, okay? And that was the right-to-know, addressing police video can no longer be requested by the right-to-know process. But I was thinking, what if, because the other one addresses, and I can't remember that number, it addresses, instead of having the person sign to search, like their vehicle or whatever, they, they can be on the body cam, okay? Instead, that's what it said. So I thought, well, if, okay, if you can be on a body cam for that, then why wouldn't you have the right-to-know if you're on the body cam? Because if the police said you were on the body cam and you weren't on the body cam, you know, who's lying?
You mean as far as having given your consent to search?
Yeah, because it's in those things that you change.
Because obviously if they found something, they'd have to produce that, because they would have to justify the validity of the search. If they didn't find anything after the search, most people wouldn't care, but I guess...
No, no, what I'm saying, what if they did not give the person the opportunity to sign the papers to search? Because it says, you, they, this is using, being able to use a body cam instead of getting the signed consent from the person. So what if, you see what I'm saying? So what if they did not ask the person, and the person is saying, "They never asked me if I could sign..."
Ms. Shaner, I think the disconnect is equating right-to-know with what Mr. Akery talked about, the defendant's always going to get that in, in some sort of process. You know, if that was their mechanism by way of...
No, I think what she, I think what she's saying is, is that they never offered the guy the right to sign the form, and, but he's consenting, well, I don't, I don't think that would make any difference. I mean, typically, all that form says is that, you know, "I've asked you for the right to consent to search your car," and you're acknowledging that...
But is your concern about access to that video?
Well, yeah, that's, that was my main concern, access to that video, but, because, and then I read the other one, and I said, "Well, what if the police officer is saying, "Well, I got him, you know..."
You could send it to him on, on body cam.
Yeah, and they're saying...
Well, they would have to produce that if...
Okay, I mean, and so they would then, right? The police would?
They would have to, pursuant to right-to-know, but they'd have to produce it pursuant to the criminal charges. Like, when I, when I get a client that, whatever, let's say it's a DUI, when the DA gives me their discovery, it has a copy in there on a disc or a thumb drive of the, all the body cam, from every officer that's there.
Okay.
And you can see the field sobriety tests, or, or you can see them, you know, making, taking the guy, pulling the guy over and all that, so you get that as a defense attorney.
All right.
I just couldn't, as a private citizen, say, "I want, I want that." It's just like if I was a defense attorney, I can't, I can't ask for, I can't do a right-to-know and say, "I want the witness statements." You're going to get them in discovery at some point in time.
Well, okay, wait a minute, so what if you, my time's up, but what if, what if you were, what if the person was arguing, okay, with the police officer, and they, you know, something happened, and the police officer's saying, "No, it didn't happen," you know...
Then, then it depends on what context that comes up, okay? So I remember talking, I don't think it was the current chief, I think it was the former chief, he told me, like, a lot of people will come down there and say, "Oh, when your guy pulled me over, you know, he was very, you know, abusive," or whatever. And, and he, he was in here one night, I don't remember when it was, and he, and he said that, he, he will actually go and pull the body cam video and watch it, and then he'll call him back and say, "Well, what you're telling me, you know, isn't borne out by the thing," and he says nine times out of ten, and he never hears something like that.
I was just thinking, if there was a controversy, okay?
Well, someone could get it, let's say you say, you say the police officer struck you during a routine traffic stop, okay? And so you file lawsuits, you can get that at discovery, you'd have to subpoena it.
Okay.
But you would get it, because it would prove whether or not the guy actually...
Yeah, but what if it caused, like, a community uprising about something? Let's say something happened, and it was on the body cam, so you're saying that the citizens can't get that, to, you know...
Unless they were needed it for some sort of...
Because I was just thinking, we're a home-rolled community, okay?
You couldn't get it for, like, unless it was some court of sort of litigation.
So if we wanted to put more restrictions on, you know, something, you're saying we couldn't get something like that, if there was controversy on a body cam?
But the flip side of that, Ms. Shaner, is what happens if you don't like your next-door neighbor, and you find out your next-door neighbor was fooled over by the cops for drunk driving, and you just want to get a copy of the video, just for entertainment purposes?
Well, okay, well, thank you very much, because now you're, you're going further, you know, and explaining some stuff, that, yeah, I could see that too, but I was just concerned...
You can get it, it's just, you're not entitled to get it under the Right-to-Know Act.
All right, you can get, you'd have to.
Right. It really isn't Peter's policy, it's a statute and case law that's providing that information, we're just implementing it typically.
The Office of Open Records determines what we are able to give out.
Yeah, we mirror, we try to mirror what the policies are in the cases.
And we can't make it more stringent or less stringent, because that's probably a state function.
No, I was an probation officer, I know that.
Unfortunately. I wish I could see some of the video.
Any other audience comments? Okay, the same, move into, it looks like there's no unfinished business, we're moving into new business, first item's acceptance on the resignation of Ed Johnston-Baw from the Environmental Quality Board.
I'll make a motion that we accept Mr. Johnston-Baw's resignation, thank him for his service.
Thank you, second.
Motion on second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's seven nothing.
I'll also make a motion that we appoint Rachel Messerly to serve out the balance of Mr. Johnston-Baw's term. Kyle, can you tell us how long that is? You don't have to right now, just make sure that we tell her how long her term is.
Second, I'll second that motion.
Yeah, we did interview her at the, as a candidate for the youth commission, and we're very impressed by her. So that being said, we have a motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's seven nothing. Appointment of the Peters Township Code Enforcement Officer.
So the Peters Township Code of Ordinances authorizes the township manager to appoint a code enforcement officer, and we recently did this back in January with our new code enforcement officer, Paul Bosley. He's been on the job for a little while now, and I just want to take a moment to say what a great job he's done for us. I think we're finally back to, once again, being able to get out into the community, and do some proactive code enforcement, which hasn't happened in quite a while, so we're thankful for that. However, to have the ability to file non-traffic citations at the magistrate, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania requires that the code enforcement officer be appointed by township council. And this gives the ability, at the magisterial level, for these to be filed as non-traffic citations, as opposed to personal criminal complaints, which Mr. Bosley and the magistrate both agree would be a better way to handle this.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Paul Bosley to the position of Peters Township Code Enforcement Officer.
Second.
Did we make these appointments previously?
We have, no. We do this for a loaning officer at our reappointment each January, this will be another one that we do on an annual basis.
Okay, motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven nothing. Next will be appointment of an alternate representative to Sheikah.
Mr. Lauer wants to be the alternative appoint representative.
This is an opportunity to have a non-elected official serve as an alternate on the board of directors.
Fine, I'll make a motion that we appoint Paul, Paul Lauer in his capacity as township manager to serve as the township's alternate member to the Sheikah Board of Directors.
Second.
Okay, it's an opportunity for him to share in our pain.
Can I ask, who's the, sorry, who is the current member?
You.
That's what I was told, but I wasn't.
I'm just kidding.
Is it you? Is it you? Okay, all right.
Even going?
No comment.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Next will be an award of a professional service contract for the design of, I believe it's the Oakwood Drive Bridge.
That's correct.
Oakwood or Oakbridge?
So the 2025 Peters budget includes appropriation of $75,000 for the design of a replacement bridge on Oakwood Road, near the intersection here of West McMurray. The bridge, which was constructed in the 1940s, is showing signs of significant deterioration. If you have any questions as to the structural integrity, I'm sure your Mr.'s might instantly answer those, but we do believe we're nearing the end of its useful life, and so we have accepted proposals for professional services associated with the design permitting and bidding. They were received April 11th, 2025, from the following firms, that you can see in the cost associated with that work. Based on their prior, prior experience with the township, Mr. Zemitis is confident that WEC engineers can successfully provide the necessary design services for this project. Of note, obviously, their price here of $111,950.65 is a not-to-exceed price, and it's more than what we budgeted in 2025. Our thought is that if we were to hit the $75,000 mark in 2025, we could reallocate a portion of our, of this year's pavement maintenance program, of which we have about $150,000, to this through a budget amendment later in the year, or if we do not reach that $75,000 mark by the end of '25, we could budget this as part of the 2026 budget.
What was the $75,000 budget based off of, sort of previous?
That was a number that I just guessed at, to be quite honest with you. I mean, I order of magnitude, you know, 7500,000, so this is, this will be a multi-year project of design and permitting and bidding effort, so the schedule is, you know, if we award tonight, project will kick off in June, you know, start off with surveying, geotext, get all that done for the fall, but the hope is to have the design firm provide us with preliminary construction cost estimates, so we can talk about this at budget time in October, November. Then the actual preparation of bidding documents wouldn't be until winter, spring next year, and hopefully shoot for a summer construction next year. So it's, it's going to be multi-years, so that's, like Kyle said, the thought process was, well, we'll allocate 75 this year, that's probably about what we'll spend, and then the difference between 111 and 75 will be allocated for 2026.
Two questions. Did we conduct a pre-bid site visit with the engineering firms?
We did not, no. It's a fairly small project, the bridge is open, you can go inspect it, we provided photos and everything.
It would have been nice, more comforting to know that they were all there standing and looking at just how bad it was. Secondly, does it have the potential of being replaced with a box culvert?
Yeah, that's probably what it's going to, that's my guess, is what it's going to end up being, some type of prefabricated box culvert type of structure. We won't go with the steel beams again, I mean, that was a, it was built in the 1940s, that was kind of the standard at the time, but I believe you're right, Mr. Lewis, I'm, the proposal asks the consultant to come up with two alternative designs, just so we can consider...
Looks like a railroad bridge girder there.
Yeah.
That's the way they look, they, they last another 200 years, though.
Yeah, it's a hollow skull. So we, you know, the funny thing about this bridge, we have no records of this, this was, you know, not a long time ago. The only record I have on this bridge is that back in 1985, we scraped and painted the beams, and actually put some reinforcement webbing on them, and as you can tell, that's, that's definitely, that repair has reached its useful life, so we need to seriously consider replacing this bridge in 2026.
All right, thank you.
Mark, in the past meetings, you, there are several other bridges that aren't doing well, why, why this first?
Uh, several, several reasons for this one, it's, it's probably the highest traffic, Oakwood Road gets a lot of traffic, and it's probably, the other two are concrete structures, the steel on this is particularly in bad shape, and I, personally, I want to, I think we need to replace these beams, the, the concrete structures, the Camp Lane Bridge and the Galley, we call it a bridge, but it's really a glorified box culvert as well. They're not in great shape either, and they're actually older than this bridge, but I think this is in the worst shape, and it probably carries the most traffic, so we want to...
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion, we award a professional services contract to WEC engineers for the design of a replacement bridge on Oakwood Road.
Second. Motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven nothing. Next up will be a request for access across a parcel in the Timberlake plan of lots.
This is what we discussed before, Kyle, right?
Right, we've talked about this ad nauseam, as it relates to that parcel that sits off of the cul-de-sac on, I believe it's Grand Site, or not, Shady Crest, thank you, onto the Lutz property. Now that we've finally reported the deed that puts the, that parcel P into the hands of the HOA, we still want to make sure that we have rights for access across that parcel. You can see here, what the developer's asking for is a driveway on each of these parcels and utilities, but it's probably in our best, in our best case to, before we make a decision, give the residents of the Timberlake HOA, as well as the neighboring property owners an opportunity to come in and discuss this, so township manager's recommendation is that we put this on the agenda for the June 23rd, 2025 regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion on the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven nothing on that. Moving into, it's like a two-par deal, with subdivision departure from, I guess, the subdivision, subdu, can't talk.
The Saldau.
Go ahead, take it away, Kyle.
Yeah, so this, this is a simple subdivision, it's taking this two-acre parcel and making it into two one-acre parcels that are shown over here. Prior to be able to doing that, through the Saldau, a departure from our regulations that allows for another driveway to come out onto Bower Hill Road, which is a collector street, that, that departure needs to be approved by council, so that, that site can be developed.
Do we have any idea where they intend to put the driveway on this lot that's circled Yellin? The reason I ask that, is because I know they just built a house right across the street from Walnut Drive there, so when you come out right now, that driveway actually, essentially forms a four-way intersection there now, that driveway with that new house that's on lot, that would be, what, 521? So I'm just curious to know where this driveway is going to be, because if that driveway ends up on the right side of this lot, you're going to have two driveways coming down right across the street from Walnut, which could create an issue.
There is a representative here, sir, are you able to speak to that at all?
My name's Dave Wolf, I bought the property, and my intent, there was a home on there, my intent was just to subdivide it and the two-acre parcels, and right now, there is a existing driveway, right here.
I'm sorry, you're standing right in our way.
On the other side, yeah, sorry. Sorry, existing driveway here, the new construction that you mentioned is right here, which is, this is coming into the plan, so that's already there. The subdivision to the second lot would be on this part, and the driveway would be...
So the plan isn't to move the driveway on that first lot any further up this way than where the current driveway, where the driveway for the old house was?
You know, it's, it's based on the builder, you know, how he's going to work in, how he would build the house and put the driveway, depending on the site.
Well, we could restrict it, touch it...
And that's my only concern, because you can see where Walnut Drive is, the driveway on that new construction is directly right across the street from it. Right, exactly, right. My concern is if someone builds a new house on this lot here and puts another driveway there, you're going to have two driveways coming down right across from Walnut.
Well, can't we, can't we put something in there?
Well, I think we can't.
It says, it says the placement would be something...
Has to be so many feet from where it's...
No, the placement has to be proved to be something.
Right. We don't get to see that.
If you look at where your side yard is, though, see like where the, your side yard, you're kind of, you can't get in the side yard anyways, you know, right there's your side yard, come right there, that, that come straight down, you're kind of on the, you're kind of off the, off it a little bit, anyways.
It's a raised intersection there, isn't it?
No, it's further up.
Yeah, it's about, just about.
Just about farms.
Is that house going to be a raised, the taller?
It's already, it's already...
Oh, it's already raised?
Yeah, the house, the house sat back here, and it's been, I mean, this has been in place for, I think since the 50s, and before Walnut was there, but...
Why couldn't we approve it with no change in driveway cut? Meaning, the driveway would have to exit where it has in Memorial.
And that'd be fine by me, we did that. Like, my concern is, I just don't want to see three of them all together there.
No, and I appreciate your insight.
Because we don't know where the one on the next lot's going to be.
And I don't know the topography down through there.
The driveways could be on either side, but I would not want to, I don't think I would like to restrict, it was up to me.
It's not.
To the side, I understand, but, you know, restrict it to, to the future mill, that's what it is, that's what it is.
And our traffic engineer has, has reviewed this, and, and believes that there's appropriate site distance for both of these parcels. Council wishes to set a condition for that, you have the ability to do so.
So he doesn't have any issues with where the driveways go, he's the traffic expert?
Hmm.
Okay. So I'll make your recommendations.
I'd like to speak on this, if possible. Michael Grass, 100 Walnut Drive. I, I have the property directly to the, it's below, I think that's to the east of this. So I'm here asking that we not approve this subdivision tonight, you know, the rules say that on this collector street, we can't have any new driveways, so I would like to kind of stick to that. I understand, you know, developers have the right to do these things and build things and, and all that, but it's, it's kind of my strong belief that we should stick to the guidelines and the rules and the regulations that we have in place for the developers to follow. You know, I think all too often, we kind of just bend over to the developers and let them do kind of more than what's written in the, in the kind of code, and because of that, we have all these residents in our community that complain about the overdevelopment, the traffic, the congestion, and all of that, and I think it's just because we get these one-off developers, it just kind of adds up over time. You know, if, if you kind of look at what happened on Bower Hill Road and this whole stretch in the last several years, you've got just about farms that came in, you've got the McGroby subdivision that came in that put two additional driveways right in this, this segment, that, that should not have had additional driveways on a collector street. You had the Bauer Schoolhouse that had what I would call probably egregious zoning variances to get that approved, and all of that has just kind of added in an area that's supposed to be low-density residential, with no additional driveways, and we just keep adding more and more to it. So at some point, you know, we've got to sit here and say, where is the line for too much is too much, and I think, you know, we've kind of gotten to this point, and I'll say that the developers that put in those other, you know, the Bauer Schoolhouse and McGroby subdivision, they did things for the community that, that kind of went above and beyond just subdividing the lots, there was a sewage line that got put in for, for residents that didn't have sewer. The Bauer Schoolhouse, you know, provided a service to the community that was desperately needed, that, that had the after-school care. You know, this is just literally developer asking for an additional lot to be put in, that we don't have to do. So, you know, I'm here saying, you know, my property would be negatively impacted by this, we'd have two driveways pointing right at the side of our house, and, and the grade of this, it actually goes downhill from Bower Hill, so the driveways would be uphill, headlights pointing directly at our second-story bedroom, so, you know, it would be a nuisance to us, so, you know, approving this, it does come at the expense of kind of what I would say our property value would be. So, and, and lastly, I had a question, I actually called, you know, our planning director, it says in the zoning ordinance for low-density, that whenever you create a new lot, you're supposed to have 0.7 acres set aside in open space. I don't see where that's listed here. Mr. Holdren said that that's actually a typo, I don't know that that's necessarily true, I mean, it is written in the code as 0.7 acres. I don't see that, but even if it is 0.07, as Mr. Holdren suggested, I think that's egregiously small, so if it is a typo, and, and that's the case, I think that's something we need to look at in the, the long-range planning. And lastly, the one other thing that, that I'm a little bit kind of upset about is the fact that I had no notice of this going in front of the planning commission, I think a simple subdivision that conforms to all of the rules and regulation, I wouldn't need any notice, because it would just be allowed, but for the fact that we're asking for things, I think I should have been notified, being a kind of adjacent property to this one, so I found out about it just by chance, looking at a, at a planning commission meeting, and I noticed that the, like, planning commission, or planning department letter was dated May 7th, they, they mentioned in that, and then the meeting was May 8th, so even if, you know, there was just no time for me to, to kind of make it to that meeting, so unfortunately, I'm here tonight, voicing my concerns, because I wasn't had the opportunity to go to the planning commission, so with all that said, I would appreciate you guys not approving this tonight, thank you.
Mr. Grass, so when the old house was there, the one that was raised, did you have the issues? Mr. Grass, so when the old house was there, the one that was raised, did you have the issues with the headlights shining in your house?
No, that house was vacant.
Okay.
So, you know, like I said, it's, it's kind of a vast change in, in kind of what we signed up for when we bought the property. It was kind of empty and with all the, all the development that's come in here with different things being approved, it's vastly different than, than it was just a few years ago.
Why don't we give notice to people, adjacent landowners, in this situation where it's, it's actually asking for things that aren't provided for in the ordinance?
Yeah, no, that, I, I think that, I think it brings up a fair question.
Are we supposed to be giving notice and we just didn't do it here?
Correct me if I'm wrong, because it's a simple subdivision.
Typically, for minor plans or simple subdivisions, whatever you want to call it, we do not provide any type of notice. Same thing with simple, for lack of a better term, minor land developments, we don't provide that notice.
It isn't required.
It's not required.
But I agree with you, Mr. Kier. I think when we're looking to do a departure or something like that, it's a little different.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, if, if this was just a straight, we're going to take this two-acre parcel and making it into two one-acre parcels, we wouldn't have to give notice to anybody. We're just creating an extra lot. But here, you're changing things from, or, you know, and I think there should be input.
See, we've had this discussion before, like, where do you draw the line? It's almost that we should just give notice on everything, or we just be simply.
Well, I agree with you.
Well, keep an eye on it.
This is an agenda item at least.
Yeah, well, our notices do go out to six, people within 600 feet for some of the more major subdivisions. The question would be, would we be doing the same thing for even some of these smaller subdivisions?
I would do adjacent landowners on simple subdivisions.
I mean, he owns a broadway across the street, he should have had notice of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because he should have been able to go to the planning commission and voice his concerns there, and maybe the planning commission would have put more conditions on this plan.
Remember, too, and often municipalities don't even bring simple subdivisions to the council or the elected officials. They do them by staff.
Yeah, I think Gary's right. I mean, we should, I don't think we need to go 600 feet, because I don't think anybody, you know, his neighbors four doors down probably aren't going to care. Nobody 600 feet down Bower Hill Road is going to care. But he certainly cares.
So this two-acre parcel here, the, the land to the right of it is being developed currently?
Yes.
And they're putting a driveway onto the collector?
Yes, because it was an existing.
By?
It was an existing lot already, so they didn't necessarily need to get. Actually, so this, so this lot and this lot are recent adds per the McRobey division. So, so we've got two new driveways already. This one was existing, and then we're, they're proposing another one here. So what was one driveway way back when, it's now four, all in a stretch of, you know, 200 feet.
So did we get, we didn't give a departure for that other house, though? How did that other house get a permit?
That's my question. Was that lot already created for 521?
Yeah. Was that lot already there?
No.
I'm guessing that it was part of the McRobey.
But, but then they should have only been entitled to one driveway, because of the drive, the house would have been where this lot, Lot 2 would be, right? So when, when the building permit was issued for 521, did we miss something? Or was, should that have been before us?
I'm not sure.
It might have been just through the site plan.
Yeah, we might, we might need to do a little digging on that to, to get council.
You want to table this?
Yes. I think we need more.
So you're withdrawing your motion?
Yeah.
Is there anything else before you table that?
For you, one for the applicant to come back before you to demonstrate by way of traffic study or anything as to why you should, you know, what harm may result. Obviously, our traffic engineer looked at this, but.
And he's not concerned at all about, did he know that the driveway at 521 was there?
Yeah, that's the problem. We, I don't know what he knows. He might just say, you can't create site distance, but, you know. That, that doesn't necessarily mean he, he assumed that the driveway could be there.
Because, I mean, if you're telling me he looked at it before that, because the house at 521 was just built now, recently.
Right.
So he looked at this before that house was built in 521 and said, yeah, that's no problem with the driveway where you want. And he didn't have that information that that house at 521 was going to be built, and that other driveway was going to be there. I would want to know that.
Do you know when you looked at this, Mark?
Mr. Mudry reviewed this.
Couple of months.
Certainly like in the last couple of months. So that house would have been under construction at that time. And just for the record, too, 475 is under construction with a new driveway as well. And that was part of the McRobey lot that was subdivided a year or two ago as well.
So if it was subdivided a year or two ago, we, we would have voted to allow for.
It was more than a year or two ago.
Yeah, it's, it's like four or five, yeah.
Yeah, but we still would have had to address that issue.
I don't think we did. I don't recall discussions of what was going on with the driveways.
Sorry, I interrupted you, Mr. Lewis.
You are, though.
Sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry, finish.
No. I don't recall discussing the driveway condition back then.
I, I know we did not discuss 521, because I'd have raised concerns about that, because the way you come up Walnut, Walnut comes up a fairly steep incline to Bower Hill. And you're not going to see a car coming out. I know this because I, my daughter has some friends in the neighborhood. When you come out of there now, up to that stop sign, you have to look across because you don't know if someone's coming down that driveway. You're not going to see them, so you're pretty much right up at the stop sign.
Somebody want to make a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table this pending further received information.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look back through this and see, you know, where we got to this point and try to provide council more information to make an educated decision.
Somebody should second.
Second.
Okay, motion on a second to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, seven, nothing. That knocks out items after cheese payroll bills.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the payroll and bills. I find them to be in order. I move they be approved to submit it.
Second.
Give us a second on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that carries seven, nothing. Correspondence, just notification of coming law paths and neighboring townships. Does anybody want to talk about anything in the reports? Okay, seeing miscellaneous, not showing anything.
We have a miscellaneous over here, though.
Okay.
Mr. Lauer made the comment a couple of weeks ago with regard to the efforts of PennDOT in a patching of Route 19. I don't think there's any improvement relative to the condition of that road. And I think the township should take a position of notifying PennDOT, either through the police chief or our staff here, that a pending hazard continues to exist. They've been advised of that condition. And if we have an accident out there, there is a burden on PennDOT for failing to remedy that condition. And I think we're at that point in time.
Yeah, and we have a meeting with Representative Mahalek and Senator Bartolata scheduled for tomorrow afternoon on a separate topic, but this will be an agenda item to discuss with them as well. But we can also notify PennDOT through our staff to make sure that they understand the severity of this stretch of road. You know, we've, we've been very upfront with PennDOT. They've been communicative, which is nice, but it hasn't solved the problem. I think they're hearing us. They, they're just unable to.
It needs to be milled and resurfaced.
Well, what's their rationale? I mean, Robin Hood Lane was dug up three years in a row, right? Three years in a row between the different utilities? It says, as soon as we repaved it, another utility dug it up, right? And their whole basis for not repaving it now is because the gas company plans to dig up parts of it, right?
Right.
So what's the difference? Why can't, can't they force the gas company to come back in and repave it then?
That'd be a monstrous amount of asphalt for a utility company to, to do. And so I, I know they're trying to save.
It sooner.
Well, right, right. What I don't understand is why they didn't do it four years ago when they were doing the other, three years ago when they were doing the other part of 19.
I remember a couple of years ago, there was a part of Sugar Can that was really bad, and it was state. And they, they were like, we're not going to fix it. We sent them a letter and said, hey, this is a dangerous condition. And they were, at the next meeting, they were like, we're going to, we're going to come and pave it.
Thank you for reminding.
Isn't that what it was? I think it was something like that. So, I mean, it's on them. I mean, if, if you tell them in writing, this is a dangerous condition in our opinion, and, and.
Copy the Attorney General.
And, and, and we don't think that your solution has, has changed that opinion, then it's on them. I mean, if somebody wrecks because they're not maintaining that road properly, you know, they're going to get sued.
Well, and we did what Thomas wrote, too, a few years ago, right? They didn't want to fix Thomas either until we did that.
Yeah. I mean, I understand why they don't want, I mean, you're right. That's a lot of asphalt to ask the, you know, the utility company to eat. But, I mean, they're coming down the middle of the road, right? They're not going on the side, right?
That's what we've been told.
But, but we can, we can notify.
Do you need us to take any action at this point to formally direct you guys to?
Well, it never hurts. If you'd like to take formal action, that always helps.
Well, I think Mr. Lewis should have had that motion since it was his idea.
I, I move that we provide proper notice to PennDOT, that the status of Route 19 between, help me out here.
Gallery.
Gal, Gallery and.
Valley Brook.
Valley Brook.
Yeah, Valley Brook. Needs to be remedied.
Second.
Give us a motion and a second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Seven, nothing.
I have one more little miscellaneous.
Okay.
I've attempted to understand the portageon that still remains on Squire. What, do we know why that's still sitting there? That I thought was there when the gas line was being worked on. Well, it would be most affecting you.
On Squire?
The intersection on.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Well, there was a portageon there, and I.
It was still there when I went through there last week.
You have baited children?
Yeah, they left it there when they were doing the war construction out there last year.
Do we, do we permit those? We don't, do we?
We don't.
I know a lot of townships do. We probably, if, if this is an issue where they're just being abandoned, we probably should try to keep ties on that portageon.
A lot of them are being abandoned.
We'll look into that, Mr. Lewis.
The, the people that own the portageon are very happy to leave it sit there and collect rent. It's pretty simple.
Well, they're going to leave it there, charge the company till, till, till the cows come out.
And if the company's got 85 projects going on at the same time.
They lose track of it.
But anyway. One other thing, Kyle, we need to, whoever now owns the Bill Gray Volvo, or whoever's responsible for it, somebody needs to cut the grass down there.
Property maintenance.
And also a question, do we charge people to hold weddings on township property? I'm just curious, because I was down at Peters Lake the other day, and somebody was holding a wedding down there. And I mean a wedding, I mean a real wedding. I mean, they had like a wedding party of 12 people. They brought a whole band with them, like violin. Somebody was actually carrying a cello down into the woods. So I was just curious if, A, they got a permit from us, and B, if we're charging for that.
Not that I'm aware of. Obviously, if it's in one of our parks and you're doing a shelter rental, you're, you're paying for that shelter. At, at Peters Lake, though, I don't know that there are rentable locations at the lake. So I'm going to say no.
Do we have someone that probably has some insight?
I walked by, there were probably a good two dozen or more chairs set up. The very shallow wetlands near the double bridges.
Really?
I can't attest to the music or anything that was brought out.
Was it the four recents or just the?
My son went down and looked in his hole that the wedding would take place at 4:00.
Okay, we're going to look into that.
Well, you should, you know, that, we should at least know.
That was my point, if they ask for a permit, you know? I mean, somebody's carrying a cello into the woods. I mean, come on.
What's to permit, Frank?
Yeah?
What, what is to permit if there's not a?
Well, I mean, if, if you're using the park.
Unless they were shooting people away.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's not like I can go over there and grow corn on the side of the road, you know, start plowing. I mean, it's, it's not that extreme, but I mean.
I don't have anything against it, I just think we should know. I mean, if you're.
We're all invited, right?
You know, if you're going to bring 30 some odd people in, you know, I mean, I just think that township should at least know about it.
Continue.
I got nothing against weddings.
Because if it falls in that lake ground, you're rotten.
In a wedding gown, you probably would.
Put all the abandoned porta potties in there, we'll discourage you.
There you go.
All right, we've lost control.
Kyle, do we have any update on the splash pad?
Yes.
It said June in the, in the, in the all.
So they're continuing to, to make progress at the splash pad. We are, and they still tell us that we are set to have it completed by the end of June. In terms of opening, it's probably looking at it being into July. I don't think we want to probably open it right before Community Day. But to our, to our knowledge, they're still on, on schedule. It's, is that right, Mark? Mid to late June?
Yeah, late June.
Yeah, who knows? By then, the weather may actually warm up.
Yeah. But, but if you get a chance to go up to Great Lawn Drive and, and take a gander down on the site, they've got the equipment installed. It's starting to look like a splash pad. And it is pretty impressive, the work that they've done up there.
Peter's township logo on the bucket. That's a nice touch. Nice touch, yeah.
I have a series of photographs. If any council people would like me to share them, I'd be happy to.
Yeah. Any other miscellaneous?
I, I have one, something that came up. Can somebody go look at 130 Pleasant Avenue?
Oh, I know about 130 Pleasant Avenue, yeah. Somebody apparently cut the grass yesterday.
Oh, really? Okay, because.
I think it's the guy next door that cut.
It's an abandoned house, possibly?
It is abandoned, yes.
And?
We've cited it. In fact, I believe we're, we at least at the magisterial.
Did we cut it? We were going to cut one of them, lean them, I know that.
And it might, yeah, it might have been us who cut it.
I don't know, because I know the guy that lives across the street is a landscaper. He may have went and cut it. But that was the one I was talking about, that we should try to get a guardianship over, because the guy that lived there.
I think that is the one. I, the last we met on that, we were going to cut it, lean it.
Because he just packed up and moved to Florida and just left the place.
And there's a.
That's the tree, the trees in those.
Trees down, and then there's a low wire, possibly, like seven feet from the ground.
And Mr. Schifel, is the tree still in the yard?
They're still there.
We talked about taking those trees out, too. I think we were going to bid that out. The township can.
I have some pictures. Yeah, pretty big tree.
Yeah. I know the town manager and the code forced it around top, and I think it's going to move pretty quick, I think.
Well, the problem is it's not going to solve the issue if all we're going to do is keep cutting it and leaning it. I mean, you've got an abandoned property there.
I believe the manager's been in contact with the taxing authority to see what's outstanding, whether they're going to move on any tax sale or anything along those lines.
It'll sell if it goes up for tax sale. Is anything in Peters people?
Well, now if you see the photos of that place, when he had it on the market for two years, he didn't get one offer. You'd see what the inside of it looked like, but anyway.
Oh, I don't know right now.
So the tree hasn't helped, I think.
The tree has not helped. The tree is, the tree is the least of that property's problems.
Well, it's grown through the roof like the schoolhouse.
Any other miscellaneous, next agenda, anything? Do we have an executive session?
Real brief executive session.
All right, dude.